Please keep all cell phones off or on vibration. Remain standing for the prayer and the closing of the ceremony.
Follow the meeting order, and I will immediately turn it off for Mr. Scott Rirdley for the dedication.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have Travis Hornemaker. He's Associate Pastor with Furtles Christ Church in our community, and he's going to lead this prayer.
Father, we come before you this late in the name of Jesus Christ, but we're so thankful for your wonderful blessings upon us. But we're thankful for the nation that you gave us, Lord, thankful for the state. And Lord, as we come to our county, God, we're so thankful that we have Christian men and women who represent us here, God. And I pray, Lord, that you would sovereignly lead and guide their decisions, their discussions. I pray, Father, that we would truly live up to the slogan, "In God We Trust," that we will trust you to work with the decisions even when we can't see you working. But we pray for the peace and Jerusalem as well. We pray, God, that your hand will be working sovereignly as there just as well. Lord, I pray, God, that you just did the proceedings of this napping blessed. I pray, everyone under the settlement, always the napping blessed in the name of Jesus Christ. And that we give you all the praise, all the glory, and the honor, for it's truly an honor to serve you and to call you our Lord and Savior. Say, Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I'll now turn it over to Mr. Scott Rirdley for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we've got a guest and too many things to say, so I wrote it down, but I'll try not to embarrass him too bad, but former Commissioner Tyrone Sparkman. Most people don't even need an introduction to him, but got a few things about his military service I'd like to read. Mr. Sparkman's service began June 6, 1966, when he entered the army. Tyrone received his basic training at Fort Benning, Georgia. After basic training, Tyrone was stationed at Fort Sill, Oklahoma, where he received advanced infantry training. Soon after, he would be deployed to Korea, where he would serve near the DMZ for approximately thirteen months during the Vietnam conflict. After Korea, he would return to Fort Worth, California, where he would serve the remainder of his active duty. After approximately three years of service, Mr. Sparkman would finish his military career in 1969. He would return home with classification E5 Sergeant, Tyrone Sparkman. Tyrone and his wife, Trina, continue to be active in our community today. From their service to the church, the county commission, and many other organizations that they continue to serve in, their countless acts of kindness have impacted people all over our community, including me. Tonight, we want to say thank you not only for your military service, but for the many years of service to your community and the example you have set for generations to come. Tyrone Kim leads.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, and one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sixteen present tonight. We'll move on to adoption of our docket. I hear motion. We got motion by Mr. Halton, second. Uh, Mr. Prager, in addition, start a docket tonight.
Mr. Chairman, if you would, I'd like to move. Twelve over two, right after, uh, I guess, number five, five. All right, we got a motion.
Second.
And second by Mr. Ruben. All those in favor are moving number twelve, above of number five. Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Pass it unanimously. Now, we're back on the original docket. All those that did in favor of our original docket, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Now that we've approved our docket, if anybody wants to have public comment, Mr. Hillis, see him, and he'll sign you up for public comment. And then we'll move right on into number twelve, which we'll turn over to, uh, Mr. Gary Prager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Mr. Carl, Carl Elf Wetter Jr.
Junior.
Whereas Carl Elf Wetter Jr. was born on June thirteenth, nineteen twenty-four, in Bristol, Pennsylvania, and was drafted into the United States Army Air Corps in April of forty-three, and attended the basic training in Chantay, Illinois, for aircraft repair school, and was sent to UMA Air Force Base for B-17 gunery school, whereas he spent the remainder of World War II as an honorable discharge in May of nineteen forty-six. Whereas he re-enlisted in the United States Air Force in nineteen forty-eight, and was stationed in Germany with a fighter squadron assigned to protect the Berlin airfield. Whereas Carl Elf Wetter Jr. returned to the US and was stationed at Otis Air Force Base in Massachusetts, prior to being spent in Mountain Home Air Force Base in Idaho. Whereas Carl Elf Wetter Jr. was sent to the Philippines to serve during the Korean War, and was responsible for servicing and maintaining on the B-29 bombers. Whereas he returned to the United States in nineteen fifty-five to Travis Air Force Base in California, where he received the promotion to Master Sergeant and completed his Non-Commission Officer Academy. Whereas then-Master Sergeant Wetter was sent to Amarillo Air Force Base to attend the B-52 bomber repair school, then on the Mass, Mat, Mathur Air Force Base in Sacramento, California, then to Maguire Air Force Base in Burlington, New Jersey. He then was stationed in Turkey to support the US war efforts in Vietnam, training, repairing, and maintaining various aircrafts, and was promoted to Senior Master Sergeant. Whereas Sergeant Major, Sergeant Master, Sergeant, Senior Master Sergeant Wetter retired from the US military in nineteen sixty-seven, after twenty-two years and six months of faithful service, and went to work in the private sector before moving to Tennessee for a brief period, then making Warren County his permanent home in two thousand seventeen. Therefore, on behalf of the grateful nation and community of this dedication of his service to our nation and the security of our way of life during these three of our nation's wars, this county court here is declaring May the twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, Senior Master Sergeant Carl Elf Wetter Jr. Day across Warren County, and thus extend a sincere thank you for all the years of service.
Let me tell you, Turkey was the most interesting place, because I got to see places that were mentioned in the Bible, like Ephesus and Mother Mary's Last Home, things like that. I saw that in Turkey.
Thank you, sir, for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion. We have a bench to read with, and presuming that is presumed.
Second, a motion by Mr. England, second by Mr. Hellman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Pass it unanimously. We'll now move on to our elected official partner reports, Mr. Mutheng.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, you have my report. Have any questions? I'll try to answer.
Make a motion. Make a motion by Mr. Hellman, a second by Mr. England. Any questions about their report? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, pass it unanimously.
Thank you.
Uh, I think Mr. Roberts is not able to be here tonight, so Mr. Lee will handle this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have Josh's report. It's always very detailed. If anybody's got any questions, I'll go out and try to get them answered. If not, we'll get Josh to answer them for sure.
Got a motion by Mr. Glenn.
Second.
Got a second by Mr. Hellman. Any questions about this application report? Being none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, pass it unanimously. Uh, we'll move on to Mr. Heinz. So, uh, Mr. Wallace tonight will be here, so, uh, if you got any questions, I think we have a meeting on tomorrow, six o'clock with Deborah, and we have the, uh, director's report. So, I hear motion. We'll be, got a motion by Mr. Glenn, a second by Mr. Kelly. Uh, any questions? We'll take them to Mr. Wallace tomorrow. He's having a school war meeting this time around. Any questions? Being none, all those in favor, if they sent you a report, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, pass it unanimously. Uh, Mr. Gary Prager will do the highway report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies in Gatlinburg, uh, Highway Bridge, uh, Highway Department, uh, meeting up there with all the county co-signees. Uh, I guess the report is in the pack. Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Hellman, a second.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Poppen, uh, any more questions about the Howard? Yes.
I, I feel like you probably got this on your notes somewhere, but our sheriff's department stood up and spoke, and now our highway department represents has spoke, but we have failed to recognize what happened here two weeks ago, when our sheriff's department was out everywhere. Our, our highway department, by the time I called him about five AM the next morning, he had already pulled off the road sixty-five trees at that hour. Power was out, houses were damaged, roads were destroyed, bridges were destroyed, nurseries suffered major losses, and neither one of them had stood up and said, "I didn't need to." But you guys did a great job, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
That's on County Ford.
Oh, absolutely.
The utilities, Ben Long.
Ben Long.
They worked, uh, I know the highway park worked about thirty-two straight hours there. Uh, County Ford, I mean, they were awesome.
We met our threshold from, uh, Tuba, that actually didn't want to damage the fire disaster out, remember that around last Tuesday, so they'd, while we're on like seven, I just wanted to.
Road was washed out. There was a bridge, uh, road washed out on, in the tenth district there on Adam Bluff Trail, and it was fixed about, uh, Friday morning, it was fixed. They had one on, uh, Dark Hollow Road somewhere around Covenant Cabbage. It was washed out. There was one in Irving College, I think. There's still trees that still, you know, Levy told me today, there's still stuff out there that they're still having to remove, you know, they're getting to build as soon as they can.
They've had a lot of work. We had a lot of damage, a lot of pickles suffered, and then, so, I got a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Uh, make the record show, we had one, uh, except one, that would be fifteen to one, except the report. And I do need to make note of Levy's, uh, it needs to be spread in the minutes that he has turned in his employee handbook, and we don't vote on that, but it has to be in the minutes that he's done that, through our county attorney, Mr. Robbercracker. Now, we'll move on to the Finance Department's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, the court, you have my report. Any questions? I'll give my best answer this time.
Much as said.
I got a motion by Mr. Ruben, a second by Mr. Hellman. Any questions about the Finance Department's report? Being none, all those in favor are accepting the report, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, pass it unanimously. We'll move on to committee reports, uh, Budget Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, as you all know, we're in budget review, and we're about to get that wrapped up. Uh, Thursday afternoon, this Thursday afternoon, four forty-five, we will be reviewing the school system, all of their budgets, plus the highway parks budgets, and I think, uh, Tuesday, we'll be doing nonprofit meetings. Tuesday at six. That's all I got. Yeah. Thank you.
All right, Billy and grounds, uh, Captain, Billy and grounds, uh. We have nothing to report at this time. And economic director, Mr. Baller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, he knows, laid some papers on everyone's desk. Uh, one is the TAEP program, TAEP program. Uh, if you don't know this, Warren County had, uh, two thousand one hundred and seventy-five projects that was eight billion five hundred and three thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Also, he, uh, he has the twenty twenty-two census of agriculture, uh, the county profile. At that point in time, uh, the rank in the state on the one side, you'll notice Warren County was ranked number two in agriculture sales in the state. Nursery was ranked number one in the state. He said nation, I asked him about nationwide, and he said he thought it was thirty-five, thirty-seven percent, like something like that as a nation.
Nursery?
Uh, agriculture, agriculture as a whole. And, um, Warren County is four percent of the state agriculture, total ag. So, agriculture in Warren County is prosperous. They're just growing anyway. Also, the IDB has changed its monthly meeting to the third Tuesday of the month at four thirty to accommodate one of the members that has, uh, accepted a new position, and to keep him on it, they've had to change their meeting. So, that'll be their third Tuesday of the month. So, next Tuesday will be their first new time at four thirty. Also, uh, I wasn't able to attend the airport due to my granddaughter playing AAU basketball this weekend, but I texted Jim Dyer and said, "How about a brief report on how the flying did?" And he sent me a two thousand word essay. And I, I picked through it. Uh, it's the first flying at the airport in many years. Uh, his words was, "It was a good day." The rain prevented the DC-3 from flying, and later on in the day, the crew decided not to, so that'll be a later date. And we didn't have any other planes flying either because of the weather, but we had a good crowd of people in the community who drove, served eighty-five breakfast, and the sheriff's department had their command center for people to tour and demonstrate that they're grown. He also said somebody from the radio controlled airplane club came out and let the kids and adults try their hand at flying the models, which was a huge hit. Uh, the presentation of Jack Bucket went well. Uh, they had Chick-fil-A and hot dogs for lunch, a live plan. He estimated about two hundred people overall attended, and, uh, no injuries and no, nothing was damaged, so it felt like it was successful in the first attempt. That's all. Thank you.
We'll move to education, Mr. Herrmann.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're having a lucky meeting tomorrow night at Bible School at six P. M. We're going through the school and speak about Charles.
Uh, financial management has nothing to report at this time. Uh, we'll move on to Alpha Wellman, just in case of.
We have nothing to report at this time.
All right. Uh, Gary Prager, Highway Bridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the highway park was really busy after the storm, and that night, too, I believe, about seven o'clock that night, they were already out there. And, uh, like I said, they worked about thirty-six straight hours there. You finally send them home, and they come back the next morning. But, uh, there was a lot of, lot of trees down, uh, a lot of roads washed out all over the county, so they done a, a remarkable job, man. I want to thank the sheriff's department, and again, the guys in County Ford. Thank you.
Uh, policy personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Policy personnel met last Thursday the sixteenth. We, we had reports from the judicial commissioner and the coast department. Both of them have been pretty busy, and, um, we went over some of the environmental stuff with the coast department, and, uh, some of that's been went forward, and we're thankful for the county attorney that's pushing some of that on the road, and, uh, trying to get some of these places cleaned up. That's all we have. Thank you, sir.
Uh, second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Everybody's feet was cold this morning, and we finally got an ambulance remount back, and it, I think it is about two or three days, it may be in circus car, but other than that, it's all good. But.
County directions partnership, Mr. Hellman?
Uh, we're going to have a meeting next Tuesday morning, uh, and, uh, that'll be at the jail. Uh, our population's jail is two thirty-nine. Uh, out of that, a hundred and eighty-three is male, uh, fifty-six female, and five of them are TDOC. Uh, we're excited to say that our new programs building is, uh, is up. Roof's on it, sides are on it, uh, concrete's in it. Uh, we're waiting on TCAT to come over and, uh, do some electrical and stuff, but I encourage everybody to go over there and look at that, uh, facility. Uh, that's where we want to house our construction, uh, stuff that we're doing on the programs. Um, we was talking about the drones, uh, with, uh, the sheriff's department and how instrumental they are. Uh, at our last, uh, meeting, we got to see some video footage of, uh, incident that happened here in Warren County, and how a drone basically saved lives. Uh, and so, uh, it was, uh, very eye-opening for us. Uh, in our meeting, we're going to be looking at another size drone that can actually fly indoors, uh, and, uh, the purchase of that, and I encourage you to go to Jackie, and I'm sure he'll help, uh, show you some of those video footage, uh, to some of the commissioners that want to look at that, find out the reason we need that. But, uh, anyways, Tuesday will be our meeting.
Thank you. Uh, there's a lady committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have nothing to report this time.
All right. Uh, as Scott said earlier, the, uh, nonprofit review will be Tuesday, six o'clock. We will have it in this room here, so we'll have a whole new room. Uh, did we have any public comment? No public comment tonight. We'll move right on into new business. We first item on the agenda is the bond for the director of schools, Mr. Grant Swans. I hear motion.
Motion.
Got a question by Mr. Ruben.
Yes, sir.
Second.
Second by Mr. Heinz. Any questions about the bond for Mr. Swallows? Being none, I'll ask clerk to call the roll.
Charlie Walton?
Yes.
Charlie Brown?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Lynn?
Yes.
Steven Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Highes?
Yes.
Scott Herring?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Jerry Martin?
Yes.
Kim Moffitt?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Jared Friger?
Here.
Yes.
Yes.
Chris Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rudin?
Yes.
Alex Savage?
Yes.
Thomas Smith?
Yes.
One more change or?
Uh, we got sixteen to zero. We'll move on to item number two, I'm at Mr. Cockney's one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a motion amendment that came, uh, at first request from Health and Welfare. Uh, this is to allocate, uh, all of the earmarked donations received at the animal control adoption center over the last three years.
Motion for it.
Motion by Mr. Redd, a second by Mr. Hilton. Any questions? Any no questions, I'll ask clerk to call the roll.
Charlie Walton?
Yes.
Charlie Brown?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Lynn?
Yes.
Steven Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Highes?
Yes.
Scott Herring?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Jerry Martin?
Yes.
Kim Moffitt?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Jared Friger?
Yes.
Chris Ross?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Paul Savage?
Yes.
Thomas Smith?
Yes.
Even one change or?
Uh, voted sixteen to zero, passes unanimously. We'll move on to item number three, Mr. Gary Prager, if you're having trouble with it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an addition to the road list. We've got three roads, three of them, turn, turnarounds. This is in the new subdivision that they developed off of.
Good bar.
Good bar road, yes. And one of them is Turner Court Lane, and one of them is Hidden River Road, and one of them is Anchor Ben Drive. Thank you.
Uh, got a motion for it. Mr. Prager, a second by Mr. Moffitt. Any questions about the, uh?
Mr. Chairman, these have been approved by the.
Yes, they've been to the planning commission and the highway bridge, the Democratic.
That all specification.
Yeah, they, they, they recommended approval. Any more question? All those in favor of adding these to the road list, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. Uh, now we'll move on to item number four, Mr. Casey Owens.
Thank you. Uh, the Health and Welfare Committee, they voted to make an addition to the handbook, and adoption rates have changed over the years. They go back and forth, and the addition to the handbook, as it reads in your packet, the Health and Welfare Committee can vote to change the adoption fees with the recommendation from the Animal Control Director as circumstances dictate.
Is that before the motion?
I make the motion.
All right.
Motion, the chair, second.
Second.
Yep. Any questions about the amendment to the animal control?
So with this doing, dealing with funding, um, does it have to come before the full court? Because anything to the funding, we don't have to vote on that.
Uh, I think Mr. Prager agrees that because the policy manual has to be approved by the board.
Yeah, it's part of the booklet that we've approved in the past. So it's part of the handbook, the booklet that we've approved in the past.
It was approved, the handbook was approved by the county court, so to change the handbook or add anything to it, it has to come back before the county court.
The way I'm reading this, they can adjust the fee. So if it's a ten dollar fee, all of a sudden they want it to be a twenty dollar fee.
Yes.
Then that affects money coming into the fund, correct?
Yes.
And so therefore, if we had changed anything in any other department, it has to come before the full court to be voted on.
This is just a delegation of the authority of the county commission to do that. It's okay to do that with the animal control.
What, what's the navigation without the dollar? Just want to make sure we're. So we're getting, we're cleaning it up.
Mr. Chairman, what is, I guess I should know this, now what is the fee to give a dog the dollar right now?
Eighty, uh, it's, it's eighty-five dollars if the dog was unaltered when it entered the facility. Ten dollars if it was already spayed or they were making it. Was it the only two options? Apparently allowed one, the male. This would allow it to fluctuate based on occupancy or owners or everything.
So typically, it costs you a hundred bucks for a dog, a dog, a dollar, right?
Yeah.
Am I saying that right? Well, has this given her, so she says next week, I want to charge a hundred and twenty-five?
No, it, it actually used to be commuted that far.
Okay, okay.
And they'll have, they'll have to have an announcement, so it's just not been ranked.
Plus, to me, like that, we need to reduce that before about the dollar.
I think it's. Any more question? Let's have a roll.
Charlie Walton?
Yes.
Charlie Brown?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Lynn?
Yes.
Steven Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Highes?
Yes.
Scott Herring?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Jerry Martin?
Yes.
Kim Moffitt?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Jared Friger?
Yes.
Chris Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rudin?
Yes.
Paul Savage?
Yes.
Thomas Smith?
Yes.
We, we need to, like I said. So just, is that, I think you have, you have. She says she got sixteen out of the way, like I said. Cause I actually spoke sixteen before, but I actually said that we're getting out. Okay. We, we'll, we'll move on. We, uh, Mr. Paul Moffitt, conclusion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, reappointment to the Warren County Board of Utilities, the Economic Agriculture, met just before full court meeting tonight. The four names that need to be reapprue or reappointed are Tommy Foster, James M. Weatherspoon, Mark Lewis, and Jim Brock.
Is that a motion?
Or a motion.
Second. Is that a motion, a second by Mr. Hillis?
Mr. Chairman, I need to amend that. Uh, we were also, uh, given the task of appointing one agent seat, and the committee nominated Jonathan Jones. He's with the tree seed drill team, and I put that on a motion.
A motion, a second by Mr. Hillis. All those in favor, I'm amending the motion ad. Mr. Jones, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Now we're back on the original appointments. And all those in favor of the original appointments, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. Now we move on to item number six, approval of the notice.
Jessica Davis, Valencia, New York County, Karen Burks, Natalie Redd, Bill, Grace Lee, Will, and Ken Missmore.
Motion for it. Got a motion by Mr. Riddle, a second by Mr. Hilton. All those in favor of approving the notice, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. All right, we'll move on to announcements. Are there announcements? I need to, uh, make an announcement that I have appointed Steve Sudfield, Lawrie Duke to, uh, West Warren Bible Utility District. That needs to be spread upon the minutes.
You want to speak those names, please?
Uh, Steve Sudfield and Lawrie Duke. Needs to be spread upon the minutes. I've got another public address. Uh, May is Mental Health Awareness Month. Join us this May as we shine a light on mental health and work together to break the stigma surrounding it. Mental Health Awareness Month gives us a focused time to raise awareness, provide support, and promote understanding of individuals and families affected by mental health conditions. Throughout our dialogue, we can help our communities promote ideals and actions that encourage positive mental health and well-being in Tennessee. So everybody should remember that. The only other thing I've, I've got is, I want to thank the sheriff's department, the highway department, we have a world of volunteers, the rescue squad, and a lot of the volunteer fire departments come out to help. We have, and thank Kenny Ford, and middle on one, we have a lot of electrical lines now, and there's a lot of work that went on during the storms, and like I said before, we've been declared a disaster area. We met our fresh old, so hopefully we'll be able to get some funding later on. It'll take some time before we figure that out. That was.
Uh, we have a local farmer, uh, Mr. Steve Gooseby. Uh, we're gonna have a benefit for him on, uh, the thirty-first of this month at five p.m. at the Vital Community Center. Uh, he got COVID, he ended up in the hospital for a while, didn't have insurance, and so , uh, the committee's coming together to have that. So it'll start at five o'clock on the thirty-first, and we'll have the home road show around six thirty for him. Uh, please come out and support that. Uh, he needs, he needs a little financial assistance to try to, to try to get through. Uh, also, one other thing, um, that I didn't hear mentioned, um, the Warren County Animal Shelter, uh, we're gonna start setting the walls, uh, for you on Thursday, I believe, uh, for the new, the new shelter, and, uh, and that's being donated by Spirit Walls. We greatly appreciate that, and be looking forward to that construction.
Anybody else have any questions?
David, would you care to report on the benefit that we've done for the, uh, Mars Shelter?
Gary's asked me to, uh, talk about the benefit we did for Wade Myers' daughter. Uh, we ended up raising somewhere around fifty thousand dollars for her and her family. Uh, and the great news about all this is, uh, she went through the treatments, they removed the mask, uh, and she went through all of those treatments, and they went in for the scans, and right now I think she'll be clear. So we greatly appreciate of, of all the calls and prayers for her and all the donations as well.
Anybody else have any? Mr. Chairman, I'm a motion, Mr. England, I hear a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.